I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please, Steve.
Prasilius.
Here.
Cromwell.
Here.
Felcey.
Here.
Schramke.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Aaron Manchester.
Here. John, you have the minutes motion?
Yes. I move that the reading of the minutes for May 7th, 2012 be waived and at the minutes of said meeting as prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Secretary of Defense, any additions, corrections, or comments? Wonderful. Call roll.
Shadle.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Prasilius.
Aye.
Cromwell.
Aye.
Felcey.
Aye.
Schramke.
Aye.
Chairman Manchester.
Aye. Kathy, you have a business?
I move that a resolution entitled a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed text amendment of the Paducah zoning ordinance by amending section 126-76 sign regulations be adopted.
Second.
Lauren, did you second it? I thought you did. That's okay, Bill. Discussion.
This, if you look at the POP sign regulations right now, hotels, motels, restaurants allow 40-foot signs. What this would allow is the rest of the park to have 12-foot tall signs instead of the four-foot monument signs that are allowed right now. Yes.
So, we have signs that are not in compliance right now?
That's correct. There's two.
So we're adjusting this so that they will be in compliance?
If it was approved, that would be correct, yes.
And how many businesses do we have that have not gotten the proper permits or whatever?
Two.
Last time somebody did that, we made them take them down and then put them back up again, didn't we?
And we've done that with subject entrances.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah. I think, I remember, the credit union, if I remember correctly.
That has happened in the past in several instances, yes, that's correct.
I guess I'm confused because when we were putting together the POP zone, and one of the things that it talks about here is to increase the visibility of tenant signs for the Information Age Park, I thought the Information Age Park was supposed to be like a campus-type setting, and that was the reason for having the lower signs, is because it was really supposed to be, you know, an office park, not a...
That was certainly the original vision of the planned office park at that time. You're correct.
Seems to be a never-ending process on signs. We have dealt with it at least once a year for a long time on some project or another. Somebody gets a different idea. This is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, however.
Would this affect any other areas? I mean, we're changing this because of Information Age Park.
Yes.
It would also affect things in the future?
The only place that this applies to is the Information Age Park, which is basically bound by US 60 and US 62 McCracken Boulevard, so it's all those businesses in there. So, obviously, any future businesses, and there's quite a few vacant lots within that park, would be able to have the 12-foot signs if it was approved.
What about the existing residents there? Could they make a bigger one now?
Yes, they could.
And as far as development, it's what, 1/10th complete, or?
Probably, yes.
Y'all have any questions?
So, it wouldn't impact anybody other than those folks who are out in Information Age Park right now and new tenants that would...
This would just impact the Information Age Park from four feet to 12 feet, and a majority of the other zones in the city, which is all of our business and industrial zones, the, it's a 40-foot height limitation and 1.5 square feet per lateral feet of frontage.
Yeah. We've made exception, or changed such that they could do different, like out at West Park Village, too, haven't we?
Yes. That was a little bit different because it's a mixed-use development, where every time they wanted a sign, they have to come to the planning commission because it's a development plan amendment that allows people the flexibility in that park to have different types of signage.
Yeah, and we allowed the credit union to have a different kind of signage out there.
Yeah.
We made an exception for them. Because I kind of like the, what do you call them?
Monument.
Monument. Signage around an area, the business areas, for like West Park Village out there, you know, I think that's, just looks a little more appropriate to me. That's me.
Now, that big sign in front of the credit union on New Hope Road is in the county, when the flashing, that flashes and changes the...
That big sign, yes, but not the signs that they put up themselves.
Right.
They're the ones, we made them take down.
Right, but that other sign?
Yes.
Being in the county, they...
Understand on that. Even though they park in the city to repair it.
Prasilius.
No.
Cromwell.
Aye.
Felcey.
No.
Schramke.
No.
Shadle.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Chairman Manchester.
No. Okay. The next item of business is the discussion of Renaissance Area Master Plan. You ask that this be a workshop, and we're not taking any proof tonight or testimony, more appropriately, because we've heard testimony so far from various people, a list of either eight or nine, at our public hearing, which will continue until our next regular meeting. And although I didn't ask anybody to come, I did discuss with Steve Irvin the request that Mr. Doolittle be here because he made the main presentation of the motion that will be in front of us next week, uh, next two weeks from now, June the 4th. I tried to decide in my mind when we decided to have this workshop, and of course, the first objective of, thank you, Dan, you may be excused if you needed to go.
I have no...
I understand. And the purpose of a workshop is to have a goal, and I guess that goal will be to reach a decision about the proposal to attach this document that we all received last week, two weeks ago, as part of our comprehensive plan. It's not an easy read, but it's raised a lot of, not flags, but questions. I tried to make some notations in it when I went through it. I've read every page of it. Tells you a lot about my life. I felt kind of like a congressman, Steve, when I read this. They rely on aides and employees and specialists and counsel and a whole list of people who helped them, quote, "read," unquote, the documents that they're considering. I think what is proposed is a vision of what collective group has come up with, and from reading this, a strong input from one or more consultants, and certainly Mr. Doolittle, who is a smart man, as well as other people on this, people who have proposed this to us. I don't, I don't know if anything more serious has been presented to us other than the comprehensive plan we passed five years ago, but this is certainly a serious matter, and I know it doesn't, doesn't rest easy, or can it be ignored by anybody because it impacts our whole area and certainly this city. With one thing in mind, and that is trying to reach a decision as to any fact that can be presented to us, this is rarely done anywhere except in Kentucky and the United States. It's certainly not done other than the appearance of being public, but this is the most public form I know you can have, and that is before Planning and Zoning Commission. We have not met. We're meeting tonight concerning it, and with that in mind, I'm open to your suggestions of how do you want to proceed with it. You have specific questions you want to ask Steve Doolittle, or Steve Irvin, or anybody. I'd like to start off to have some input about how this got to us, and this, this is the only reason I'm asking, just for information, how this document got presented to the Renaissance Did it come from Paducah Riverfront Development? Was this done in conjunction with them? I don't know if anybody on this board had any personal input into it. If they do, I'm unaware of it, but can you give us some background here about how this was put together?
I'm glad to, Mr. Chairman. The City of Paducah Planning Department responded to a notice of funding availability from the National Park Service. At this point, it goes back a couple of years. And there was a grant opportunity for communities to increase their cultural tourism opportunities, things they could do to improve and increase, and that sounded a lot like downtown Paducah. At that point in time, there had been some consideration that the plan elements we had in the comprehensive plan and the general plan weren't really specific enough to a number of the things that were important to us. So, when that opportunity came up, a grant was applied for, it was ultimately awarded, and the city commission decided at that time to hand it off to one of its downtown planning agencies, namely Paducah Riverfront Development Authority. And they were by ordinance specifically charged with the authority to do planning and development work in that area generally, and specifically were given the task of the Renaissance Area Master Plan, or the RAMP. The acronym worked for Renaissance Area, and it was a master plan, so that's how that all got to be. So, for two years, they went through a laborious process of doing a nationwide search for consultants. I think we got 14 or 16 responses to that. We interviewed, the board interviewed, I don't know, six narrowed it down to three, ultimately selected city visions. The, those board members are Joe Frampton, Bruce Brockenbrough, Meredith Schrader, Joe Dempsey, Gail Kaler, and I'm missing, I'm missing one.
Where's Ronnie James?
Ronnie James was on the board at the time.
This is a very ambitious plan.
It was. If you, if you go to the beginning of your, of your book, and you, and you look at the table of contents, that, where it starts with, it goes introduction, Paducah's assets, downtown challenges, downtown Paducah identity, strategic focus areas, physical connections, building critical mass, increasing tourism, Paducah downtown hotel analysis, reinforcement of downtown character, transportation, reuse of the executive end property, those were the major contractual items that they asked the consultant to address. So, there's been, we've taken some commentary about, well, why wasn't this included? Well, it wasn't. It wasn't included in the contract, or it wasn't consistent with what we were receiving funding from the National Park Service for, or there were questions why other specific things were included that weren't ordinarily included, like, like marketing. Well, there was a specific requirement that we examine the market and marketing, and I would remind you that the statute allows you to add anything to the comprehensive plan that you want and that you see fit. So, that part seemed to make sense. So, we went, we went through this long two-year period. The consultants were, who we call city visions, really amounted to four different consultants. They were, they were the lead agency, but we also, the civil engineering for transportation, that consultant was HTNB from Louisville, a large civil engineering firm. The engineer on this job was formerly the city engineer for the city of Louisville, who was head of the traffic division, later went on to work for the transportation cabinet, and then came to work for HTNB. Consultecon is a Cambridge, Massachusetts-based company that had done work in Paducah before. They had specifically done work with the River Discovery Center. And then there was EDAW. They were the design, the design firm. They were also a northeast-based company. They provided the landscape architects and some, and made, those were the guys that made some of the design recommendations in the plan for some of the physical elements. And then city visions wove it all together. What, what somewhat... I'll spend trying to thought.
When you said the grant became available, the funds for the grant were specifically for what? For the study, for the project itself?
Were to pay for the study.
And I think that's kind of interesting, because before we even went into the selection criteria or the consultant, we had to do, basically as part of the grant, we had to tell the National Park Service exactly what we were going to do, and they actually came back on a couple instances, eh, you're not going to do that, but you're going to do this, because it was so tied so much to cultural tourism, those types of things. So, we were bound through the National Park Service, pretty much exactly what we could have asked the consultant to do. We could have added...
I'm glad, glad you mentioned that, because we didn't propose to resurvey the historic districts by survey, historic property survey. National Park Service came back and said, you're going to use some of our money to conduct a new survey for us. So, we took a chunk of the change and...
You don't see that as part of the plan, but that was done. Every structure in the downtown area was surveyed.
So, we get back to the grant's funds were for the study?
Yes.
Or not for the whole implementation or part of the implementation?
No, zero implement, no implementation dollars whatsoever. The grant was $75,000. The city matched it with about $100,000, maybe, maybe a little bit more.
So, if I understand, there's zero money allocated to do anything that's in here?
Not a dime.
Okay, thank you.
That implementation phase would be next upon, once it's adopted, as funds become available.
Has any thought been given to where they're going to get, where to try to get the money?
Yeah. The, the PRDA has started the process of prioritizing and saying, what are the things that we need immediately? Like, for example, wayfinding and signage seems to be a somewhat obvious thing that's not controversial. Our signage leading to the downtowns isn't spectacular, and once you're inside the districts, it's not all that, all that good. So, as you said, as, as an example of something that could be done immediately that's not a big budget item and isn't, won't displace people. So, they're going through that process now of trying to wade through, if you go to page 119, that's where the summary of all the recommendations are, and they've been going through a process of, of ranking those. Some of those cost little, some of them are very heavy-duty in terms of public expenditures, and some would entirely come from, from others or from the development community.
This is a unique document in the sense that I've never considered the fact of us envisioning that we recommend that something should take place, not it could take place, but it should take place in the future. And in this document, there are some cost analysis of what it would cost, for example, the two parking garages that are mentioned in this report, and the amount of money it would take, I guess, compared sometime in the future, but today's value or two years ago value being X number of dollars. When you start talking about that, people keep, are key in on that and try to, you know, substitute their judgment for that of what these people put in there, and I don't know how accurate it is, but it is a figure. So, it gives you some idea of, in the future, what these things would cost. Some of them, I feel assured, and I feel y'all do, too, and we need to address those things before, to be fully informed, is that we ask those questions either among ourselves or request to train people who have some answers, not all of them, nobody does, but can give us some maybe direction in which we should proceed on these issues. And let me tell you, they are issues, not to me or not to you, but the only thing we can do is make recommendations to the city commission. We're no expert when it comes to making recommendations. We do it all the time to our mayor and commissioners. Y'all have any questions you want to ask of Steve or Steve, anything that really has got a burr under your saddle that you want to discuss?
Well, I want to clarify that question that we asked last time that we met, and I just want to make sure that we're correct on this, that if, can we approve this excluding page number or through page number or something? Do we have to do the thing in its entirety? Could we pick out one thing that we don't feel comfortable with?
I will be consistent with my answer and say, yes, of course you can.
Okay.
That's my, my opinion.
Did y'all understand that? I couldn't hear all the answers, so I'm sorry.
Are we going to address it item by item, page by page? Are we going to address it if we have any questions?
I think we can fairly well start through it, and that has some order to it, starting at the beginning, and we'll certainly digress and go to other sections because they're pretty intertwined, some of them are. Specifically, there are things in there that, that you have thought about after reading all of this, that you have some questions.
I don't know if it would be questions or opinions, because I certainly have opinions.
State your, your opinions as questions.
And the answer is?
Is.
Yeah. And a question is, Kathy?
Well, it's not a question, again, it's just a reflection upon, you know, I think there are parts of the plan that are very good, but there are some things that puzzle me. For instance, on page four and five, there's a huge section about historic downtown core and how lucky we are to have that core, and this was brought up as part of the discussion. And I think that's very good that it recognizes that that's there. However, when you get to the recommendations at the end, there's not a lot of recommendation about how to preserve and redevelop that core that we have such, you know, we're sort of blessed to have. And that's the part, I think, that really concerned me, is the, the focus seemed to be on developing a new section of town that we didn't really need. I mean, I don't perceive that we need it so much that it would be a top priority for the, for the redevelopment of downtown. To me, the redevelopment of downtown includes redeveloping historic properties, and that's not something that's really addressed here to a big, I mean, there's certainly a discussion about people living upstairs, and I think there's already been a certain movement in that direction, but there's not a, a section of this plan that really talks about implementing that in any particular way. And that's one of the things that I, I just would like to see, I guess. And, and in addition to what you're saying, sustaining. Sure. And improving what we currently have. And, you know, with that, with what Kathy is saying about the downtown, the lower town also, and back to retail, I just question whether we need additional retail space. I question whether we need additional parking space in the form of a parking garage. You know, it says in here, keep your river part of your general focus, and, and, you know, and putting up a parking garage right in front of the largest opening of the flood wall doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. I, I'm just not getting it. I mean, I'm not getting why that spot should be a parking garage.
Hey, you're really creating more clutter.
Yeah, and retail space. I like our open downtown, the view of the river that we do have, so that bothers me. Again, you know, we're, I'm not getting it. It's just not, doesn't feel good to me.
What about the concept of a town square where it's proposed?
Towns what? Square? Oh.
I don't, that's a great leap of faith, to call it a town square, but that's what they called it, Steve.
Well, it's, that's a label. I would say that's rather a semantic and not one that I would have picked at all. But through the discussion, they were trying to, they were trying to make the point that as you, as you come down Broadway, and, and while the core is relatively intact, and let me chase a couple rabbits as I, as I talk about that, I think one of the very significant things the plan says for the downtown core is to adopt design guidelines. And that is a huge regulatory issue, not very well-known or understood, that we don't regulate a whole lot of Broadway. We, we have a little bit in the H1 and a little bit in the H2, which are down at the Market House and the 100 block of Broadway. The rest is relatively unregulated, and that's a very significant reinforcement and sustainability issue that they're talking about. Also, as a strategy, the consultant spent a lot of time discussing with the board, but also... the consultant spent a lot of time discussing with the board, but also was written into the plan, about purchasing properties, particularly properties that are large and in poor shape because of the financial inability or, and/or the unwillingness of the current ownership to do that. So the way to address that, so they, so that haphazard demolitions don't occur throughout the core, is that we would step in and buy those. I think those were two extremely significant issues with regard to reinforcing the Broadway core. And also, when the consultants came in, we weren't without some sophistication here.
But those aren't really in here.
Of course they are. Yes, they are.
Let's talk about where they are, because I guess I missed them. Are we on page ninety-eight?
Um, it's in the, if you go to the summary of, summary of major recommendations, it's the last bullet point on page one nineteen, it's property acquisition. If you go to page one hundred and twenty-two, these are all in the, in the summaries, what to do to proactively support business development within the historic core, restore the commercial street law, street wall on Broadway, increase technical assistance to property owners and potential tenants, consider selective demolition infill to appropriate locations under public review, target funds to be used in a flexible manner for high priority property acquisitions, owner developer and/or tenant assistant, adjust HARC, design review boundaries to ensure greater consistency, consider creation of targeted downtown commercial loan funds to accommodate efficiencies in the retail commercial marketplace. Let me stop on that one. Um, some, there's some real challenges downtown beyond talking about one block of Broadway, namely the difficulty to get credit, namely the difficulty that to purchase, build out, why not appraise for a bank loan. I know of one, one case right now downtown where someone bought, bought a piece of property and the build out cost doesn't appraise for their, for their bill, for their, uh, proposed build out. That is a serious, serious problem in, in the market. And I think the only way, uh, or in the short term, the only way is for us to be proactive and curative, for us to buy properties, give them away to developers, and to provide, to create and find methods of cap financing for these projects until the economy in some of these spots takes over and they, and they become feasible. Because I think you had a couple of people came here last week, and I think testified quite correctly about, um, you know, right now, it's real, the feasibility of any project is tough, especially the ones that Kim talked about, don't do anything at First and Broadway because it's not feasible anyway. Well, that's, if it's true there, it's true, uh, throughout the downtown, and it varies from building to building. Consider pilot leased owner retail tenancy programs, seek opportunities for joint building renovation or cooperative or master developer arrangements, uh, make selective improvements to the streetscape, especially at the intersections, highlight the Victorian characters, reinforce the, the historic character, uh, convert Jefferson and Broadway to two-way streets, uh, and develop themed streetscape amenity programs. So I think they're quite specific about what to do about Broadway.
And yet, at the same time, we're talking about building new property. I mean, I, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, the build, the building new property, I think, basically comes down to, the why not to do it comes down to about four different, four different things. A, that it, it may hurt the marketability or, or suck some of the, some of the capital out of downtown investment. Um, and besides, we, and we don't need any more floor space. Somebody came and said, they counted twenty-five vacant buildings, um, I counted forty and I stopped at Fourth Street. So to say, um, to say that it's healthy and going good right now, there's, there's a lot of vacant space available. But I think it, it comes down to development would impair that ability for those currently vacant buildings to redevelop, that there is a need for parking specifically in that locale. And, um, Nick Warren reminded me of something that is important. Um, because of demolition control zone, which covers downtown, and the B2T parking regulation, which doesn't include parking, doesn't require parking, additional parking for when people do development, the city does somewhat become responsible to provide part of, part of the municipal parking situation. And it is doing that at First and Broadway right now. Um, uh, somebody made an argument that what ails downtown is the need for more green space, that that spot should be, be greened up. And then, of course, we heard from two of the tenants in the condominium project, and we've actually heard from all of them, um, that their views would be impeded if anything were developed in that block. I think it boils down to those, those four or five different things.
So what I'm seeing here, and I finally found the little section of what I read, uh, page sixty-seven, where it's recommended that the city of Paducah, our PRDA, somebody buy these properties as they become available or take title to them or something.
Right.
So they're talking about existing properties and trying to do something with them.
Existing, correct.
So they.
Correct.
They are saying that we should try to preserve areas downtown and in the, I believe it says the, the binding boundary. So they're talking about the whole area, correct?
Well, the, remember, the, the binding area are the blocks that face, no, the blocks that face Broadway, face Second Street, face, uh, Madison Street, out to Sixth. That's the, the binding. And then there is a, there are the sub-binding, uh, areas. But that's the, that's the main core, the one where the recommendation was build critical mass in this area, build from within, and then the edges will be, begin to take care of themselves. I think the real question is, do we, do we have critical mass of development in downtown Paducah?
Do you mean, right?
And, and I'm, and I'm not, um, I, I also think, and I, and I've said this, so I'll repeat it, those, um, the, the two blocks on Broadway that are currently vacant now, um, that are, one's under private control, one's under, uh, public control, um, those have been vacant, those were, those buildings were demolished out of there for a hotel project that never happened, um, since early nineteen eighties. And these large number of vacancies have been slowly occurring since, since that time. We've been there, we've, we've done that. We've had those blocks vacant for a very long time, and still we have in excess of forty vacant buildings in downtown Paducah. So, um, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't work either. What's that?
How will this correct that?
I'm pointing out that keeping it vacant doesn't correct it either.
I understand, but is this taking into consideration the plan to correct that? I didn't, I didn't see it if it's in there. I missed something.
Well, the, the, the plan is to develop critical mass, that, that we should make a concerted effort to develop the middle core of the historic districts, put our efforts there, um, support the, uh, the Clark Museum bought the property at Third and Jefferson. They have an ambitious plan to develop there. We should, uh, support that. Um, we should gear incentives and development opportunities more towards the core instead of, instead of the edges. And right, right now, we're not, we're not focused in, in those approaches. We just look for opportunities where and when they might, uh, come up. And, and remember the, one of, one of the blocks under consideration on Second Street, we don't own anyway, it's not ours, privately held, the city just leases it. Um, that will develop by itself whenever that property owner is, is ready to do that, or when the market conditions are right for that to do that. But, but moreover, Ms. Remke, to your, to your comment, I don't think development of Second and Broadway would happen anytime soon, not, not under current economic conditions.
Repeat that, Steve, I didn't catch that.
I don't think Second and Broadway would develop anytime soon under current market conditions.
Because of the funding, but that, I, I think that's kind of a moot point, because I don't think this whole thing will develop that quickly because of funding.
I think you're looking at a twenty, twenty-five year plan. Yes, sir.
Away from what you've been discussing, one of the things that you talked about, I think, in our last meeting, was the fact of getting people to walk around the quote-unquote downtown area.
Yep, yep.
And one of the inhibiting factors was Third and Fourth Street being state highways. Do they have to stay a state highway? I mean, they, obviously, they got made one, can you unmake it?
The question is who you want to maintain them, I guess, so.
I.
I realize it's money to them.
I, well, there were, it wasn't just the maintenance issue, it's, it's the I-24 downtown loop, it's Highway sixty, it's Highway forty-five, it's Highway sixty-two, it's, it's a number of those, those badges are on there.
The original reason to get people downtown, when it was more of a business district, that's why you wanted.
It was a, it was a, it was a interstate bypass, uh, loop.
Yeah.
They engaged in a lot of conversation about that. And in fact, uh, in Owensboro, which has the Highway sixty, two ways going in either direction, they're, they're ditching those in favor of, of one-way streets or of two-way streets. So instead of the big Highway sixty bisecting Owensboro, they're, um, they're getting away from that. Um, this plan does not recommend that. Uh, it recommends making structural changes to the street.
I think that still encourage people to walk across when there's a lot of traffic going, it doesn't have to stop. And that's one of the problems with those, is what, there's just two or three stoplights on the whole.
Well, I would, I would, I would make this, this comparison, um, the next time anybody is, you're downtown or anybody's downtown. Look at the relative friendliness of, of Broadway. Um, it's a high-traffic street, has parking on both sides, but the landscaping islands, having to stop at every block tends to slow and congest traffic. And, uh, um, so it, it works a little bit better. That's, there isn't that same character on Third and Fourth Street. Um, it lacks on, on Third Street, you, you have a stoplight at, at Kentucky Avenue and at Broadway, and that's it, and you're done. And if you hit those greens, those trucks can see they're gonna hit those, those greens, it's, it's very unfriendly. Fourth Street happens to have one more light, um, on it, but it's the same sort of, uh, situation. So I don't, I don't think the, um, I don't think those are going away any, anytime soon. So the, the approach was to try to add traffic control at, at key points, improve the intersections so that they're friendlier for pedestrians.
To change the subject a little bit, uh, I was concerned about the festivals and, and fun things we have in our downtown. Did I read in here someplace that the top of the parking garage could be utilized for the festivals?
If you did, I didn't see that.
I think I did, and I thought, I don't, I get that one. But anyway, where would the festivals go? What, what's the plan? Where, where would they be located?
Not a festival plan, uh, in it.
They'd just be gone?
No, I suppose they would, they would be in the streets. And also, um, our park improvement, we're adding a three-acre landmass, which is about the size of a square block in Schultz Park. And we're on, the Carson Center has big, big unused parking lots at this point as well.
Several things. Um, what about a towboat? I guess there is some discussion about that, displaying it.
Yeah, it ca, it came up very early with, with the consultants, um, when they were meeting with the River Discovery folks. Um, they, they have an opportunity to acquire a very large towboat that's out of service. And by big, I mean, one of the largest ever built in the United States. Um, except for, to this, I met earlier with some museum officials, um, there, there is no site for it yet because it's fifty feet wide, it's a hundred and seventy feet long. It's, it's, it's enormous. So, um, they tried through a large number of meetings to pin down a location. They thought they had a location, and it, it fell through. So, um, at, instead of taking it out of the plan, the plan recommendation was, try to figure that out, try to, try to get a location pinned down for that. Because of the sheer size of it, it is, it is not going to be an easy task. It's not gonna be, uh, an inexpensive project, but it has the potential to be such a, a, a wowing factor for the downtown that it's too good of an opportunity for the, for the community and for River Discovery at this point to bypass. So don't, don't think anything floating in the water. Think of a large tow being on land.
Steve, where does that boat come from?
It's called the Higginbotham. Um, it's the.
They just wanted to dump it or what?
Second largest one built, it's in Dry Dock at James Marine. Um, it's old, and it needs to be seriously refurbished, it needs a new hull, et cetera. So this opportunity came up that maybe it could go with the museum. There seems to be some industry support and excitement, uh, about that, and the River Discovery Center, uh, may have some funding for it. So, uh.
That wouldn't be saddled off on the city?
It would not be saddled on the city. No, sir.
What's the status of hotels that are talking about? I hear them. Is there any progress being made on a builder or?
The, uh, there is a whole, there's an entire hotel strategy, uh, built into this. Uh, what was significant about it was, it was a two-hotels strategy, one to embed one somewhere in downtown Paducah. Again, not, not specifically, um, located, there's a big red box. There was a preferred site for a downtown hotel, but it's on a pri, piece of privately owned land. We don't control enough land to say, here, put it, put it here. That's, that's a, one of our weaknesses, we don't have any land to offer anybody. Uh, it did not include, it did not say, put a hotel on that Second and Broadway, uh, by the way. Um, uh, PRDA and the city have been in, um, long negotiations, uh, with the developer to bring a, a new hotel to the convention center site. I don't, I don't want to say too much at, at this point. I think I'm on camera, so.
There's a lot of this that I agree with, Steve, and, and the crosswalk concepts are fine when, when you look at them and they're there, and it's good if you slow down the traffic a little. Um, I have a problem with signage of various colors in our historic downtown, and I happen to see one in this thing that was pink and green and blue, and it kind of offended. of offended my senses about what I was thinking about downtown. It does change things. It gets your attention, that's for sure. The cost even of fixing it where it would be changed, I find that interesting that's in there. I have no problem with signage in the Paducah from the interstate, showing them what is downtown, and at least giving them some idea about where they need to go if they're going Most of us have done it on occasion, and being on a trip have made detours and side trips that have really been an experience. One of them was last year to Owensboro. The signage wasn't only great, I had to stop twice and get directions. The loop, you know what the loop is and know that it'll bring you downtown. At least, I think, people know that when they get off the interstate because there's signage to that effect. But this is, this is one of those things that it really is specific about what they want to do, is statuettes and sculptures and all of it. To me, that's well thought. Some people, I'm not going to speak to them, I'm only going to speak for myself. I find that the concept of this ramp is to give some focus of what you want to do in the coming years. And while it's overwhelming in a certain way, in another way, it's not at all. It's what the emphasis this consultant wanted to give it, and the downtown Riverport people wanted to do it. It certainly, to me, brings to the forefront what they want to do. And the question is, do we want to recommend to the commission that that's what they consider? It's not a blabber night kind of thing. If somebody has thought up and thrown it all together, to me, I've seen that in the past. I think it's well thought out. Some things really concern me. And I guess is the, I got down here, wise marketing strategy in this.
That was a requirement of the National Park Service to developing marketing strategy.
This is our comprehensive plan.
Well, you can include, and you can include marketing in your comprehensive plan. The statute allows you to add anything. It has a minimum set of things you have to consider and anything else you want to consider to be added to it. But you don't have to adopt those sections either.
I have one other question. Steve, does any of this plan contradict with any other plan that we have going, like the riverfront?
It contradicts with one element of the riverfront plan. In the riverfront plan that I believe this body adopted, the often-mentioned parking lot area called for the parking to be pressed down a level and a green cap to go over the top of it.
It what? I'm sorry. I didn't...
It called for the existing parking lot at First and, or at Second and Broadway to be suppressed, dug in a half a level, and then a green deck to go over the top of it. So that becomes a green space, festival area, multipurpose space on top, but not a building No money for that plan either at this point.
For the riverfront plan?
Well, that portion of it.
That portion of it.
Phase one money is there.
What, do we just get the muscles moved?
No, but phase one is the new landmass that will be constructed in the Ohio River. And we'll also include the transit dock, about 400 feet of the transit dock. We'll also include the Marina Building portion of it.
And also the new boat launch area.
Yes, new boat launch.
Off North Sixth Street. But that was in a subsequent phase. I forget, basically, it was three or four, and so...
So the only contradiction that we have with this is at the parking lot on Second Street and Broadway.
It would change that element, yes. Mr. Tyler?
Steve, just one question. If we do not provide a positive recommendation for some aspects of this plan, how will it impact the overall plan? I mean, it seems to be kind of tied together.
I guess it depends on what part you take out. I don't think any one page causes the whole thing to tumble. It's got lots, this stool has lots of legs on it.
I think something's unique in there. Did you have more questions about that, Earl?
No, I was just thinking, we're talking about binding those areas together. If there's some specific aspect of that plan that's tied into that binding, and we decide we don't want to approve that, will that impact the overall plan?
Well, taking the binding out would be pretty significant because that's the major pedestrian strategy is somewhat tied to that.
I don't think you mean taking the binding out.
No, I'm just...
I think, for example... If you take the parking lot out, would it affect the binding theory? Is that what you're asking? That type of thing?
Example, yeah, that could be.
I think it would, it wouldn't have, it would somewhat tangentially affect it. I don't think the binding fails for that, for that one single element.
I don't think so either. I think the whole concept of the binding is trying to unify separate areas. It doesn't really hinge on a parking lot at Second and Broadway. I mean, it doesn't.
No, it does. The binding is two parts. It's about pedestrian movement and where to put your critical mass. So they point out, and I didn't like the term town square, but they pointed out to the board that you have two of your most key properties in downtown Paducah are covered up with surface parking right now. And they happen to be along the binding, along Second Street, and that needs a dose of development to spur the downtown along.
I think what you say about town square, my vision of the town square has a courthouse sitting there.
Yeah, mine too. That's town square.
So that really threw me when I started...
But to their point too, Paducah doesn't have, downtown doesn't have a town square. But somewhat kind of, if you read the plan, it says kind of the de facto area would be, you know, that sweet spot right at Second and Broadway, right at the end of the Market House and the gazebo corner on the other side. That kind of functions as, that's the sweet spot in downtown. And maybe around the Market Square, if you could call it town square. But they like to provide labels for things as a placeholder to discuss it.
Well, again, I get back to what I said at the very beginning, which is, it may be the sweet spot, but there's certainly a lot, a whole corridor of buildings that we've managed to hold on to that need some help. You know, that's where really the focus of development in my book ought to be, rather than building new ones.
Well, I think the answer is both. It's both. They're not mutually exclusive. It's not one or the other. It's imperative, really, that both happen.
It's the only concern I have is down in the so-called sweet spot or on that parking lot down in that area there, is I don't want to do, see us do anything that hurts what we've already accomplished. And by that, I mean, the people that live downtown apparently like the view. And I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that destroys that. And not only do we have them on Second Street, but isn't there apartments above the old Peder Building?
There is. There's B&amp;B above, and the CVB has...
We have quite a few residential above that. And that's why I'm opposed to the parking lots and the retail things on there. Yes, you can say there'll be only one story, but that still isn't the same, in my opinion. That's just me.
You have restaurants, too. You have some that have built with that height in mind. I mean, one on Second Street, it has a pigeon's nest, whatever. There's a reason why he put that there.
Right. And we'd have an ex-mayor who'd probably be mad, too. That's the only really objection that I have to all of this with those particular, that particular area there. And I do find a contradiction of modern signs and historic. To me, those are...
Well, I totally understand. And so when you get to the part of the plan that talks about these thematic reinforcements, when you're talking about the streetscape or whatever, that keep it in history, keep it in art, keep it in river. So when you see some of those art things, there's quite a bit of whimsy associated with some of them.
Pictures especially.
Especially the pictures.
Well, I think we do have... That whole concept, though, to me, of trying to draw people downtown, that's been one of the problems in Lower Town and downtown, has been not having something that pulls people down to that district. And I found that part fascinating.
There's nothing that says, walk this way. And in fact, you get to, look, we captured 35,000 people at the Quilt Museum. And so I was talking to May Louise Amwalt, and she said, you know, how many people they told about the district? And they would, said they'd kind of get out there and they'd kind of look over there. It didn't really look like there was anything over there. There was nothing to lead them. And so we've lost, at least the opportunity for thousands of people had we been able to lead them that way with some reinforcing elements. We've all been in downtowns where we've seen something special or cool. We see it first kind of embedded into the street, and we just know intuitively, there must be something important here. So it's that notion has been reinforced for us. We don't, we do that on Broadway very well. But you get off Broadway, and it breaks down pretty quick.
And I think one of these...
Somewhat on Second Street. Second Street would, part of Second Street would have that character as well, probably from Kentucky Avenue over to, say, Madison, you know, right past the Quilt Museum, it would do that. But not so much the rest.
One of these signage things, I think, looked like a doorway entering into the arts district.
Yeah, that was the one on Sixth Street.
And, you know, I'm okay with that. I like that. I think we should have something distinguishing the arts district. And, you know, we now have PRA, which is trying to combine the arts district and the downtown district. Well, combine it or make it shine or do something. But anyway, both of the two.
Combine it, but keep the distinction separate.
But, yeah, I think there'll be a way to do the historic signage in the historic area and the art signage, and yet still draw the two together. I didn't have a problem with that. I like that. I don't know that I want to see the big wiggly thing on Broadway, but I'd like to see it as an entrance to Lower Town.
And as you, we capture visitors mostly from the interstate, right? That come here, they're going to drive here, and they get off the interstate, and as you come down Martin Luther King Boulevard, you get to Lower Town, there's nothing on that edge really that says you've arrived, you've made it. People almost have to come, there's, if you catch the brown sign, there's a brown sign, I think, at Seventh or Sixth, somewhere in there. Yeah, six, seven, eight, somewhere, there's a brown sign that says, Lower Town, this way. But even if you take that, you manage to take that, you could drive right through the district and not really realize that you even went through the district. So the only thing that really would capture people are the banners that have been spread throughout the district.
I have another question. Say we approve this with minor changes or whatever or something, is it then like, I'm sure it's not written in stone. I mean, 10 years from now, they look at it and they think, boy, did you goof on that one? You know, that's no longer feasible. Can it then be changed? I mean...
Well, for example, at the time the riverfront plan was done, we had 70, 80 riverboat stops here, and we thought we really needed to embed something into the plan. I think we're going to have six this year, something like that. So, yes, I think as conditions change, it's incumbent upon us to keep changing the plan to reflect what our current situation is. But some of these elements, they get so expensive that once you make that critical decision, you're going to live with it for quite a while.
This is a tough call because we're not dealing with a rapid growth in the downtown area.
No, you are not.
Or any growth.
You are not.
Little by little.
It's very incremental.
And we lose some. And as I see it, this is a proposal that deals with future land use, which way our city downtown is being developed, and how to cope with that. And it's narrowed down to a specific area that, riverfront, Lower Town, and downtown. And we've had studies of downtown. I don't know about Lower Town. I know it's been a lot of effort there and a lot of, not a lot, but money spent on street improvement, curb improvements, street lights.
About $3 million total.
I look back and I think about the O International Shoe Company, which is part of that parking lot, took out about half of it at one point, or they went out of business, actually. We did have a street wall along Broadway with various local businesses.
We did, until the early 1980s, when we thought we were going to build a hotel there.
Yeah. So it's, our concept of it, I assume, would be not necessarily so much regulating the use of what goes in down in this area, which is the east side of Clark Street, I assume, of the downtown area in this plan.
Probably Ingram along the loop to the south.
I'm talking about the street.
Well, it kind of jags, so yeah, Clark.
There's some on the other side and some...
Some on the other side down the loop. But basically, it's the riverfront, it's downtown, it's Lower Town. It's the basic environment covered by the plan.
And what we're being asked to do is to add this to the Paducah Comprehensive Plan as it applies to one area.
Yes, sir.
That becomes important, obviously, for future land use decisions, as far as, you know, zoning and those types of regulatory issues.
That just fills it out about what it can do.
It allows the...
And it changes from time to time as the district changes or area changes. Anything specific that you want to discuss with Steve?
Well, even though it is a specific area, Steve, this is a comprehensive plan, and you're taking a small area and it's part of the comprehensive plan. But if you had to prioritize where you would start, where would you start?
Me personally?
Where would this comprehensive plan, where would you start? You're talking about Ingram, then, and here, you're talking about here and there.
I would, I would start downtown, if it were me, and I would take on the issue of the two-way streets for Broadway and Jefferson. That's not an insignificant issue from cost because you get into signalized intersections. Might not be, might be controversial when you start telling property owners their signs are pointed the wrong way now. They have to have dual faces.
Well, just, it would make... It would make the people that come in from out of state going the right way all the time.
It would. But I would do that before I did my wayfinding because if all of a sudden I took my one-way streets out, then maybe that'll change the pattern of my wayfinding.
That's something I think we need, I think that needs to be focused on. What priorities are there? And I think the one you mentioned is probably a very important one. And it would be done very inexpensively.
Very...
Inexpensively.
Relatively speaking, yes. Not a big ticket item.
You're just talking about Jefferson and Broadway, not Third and Fourth.
Yeah, Third and Fourth were not considered in the plan for redoing.
Well, you know, we went to Ninth Street when it started. Ninth Street started it one way, one way coming out. It used the flow of traffic through downtown and then it was extended out to...
Seventeen, out to Fountain Avenue, yeah.
I can recall parking on both sides of the street.
I know the businessmen all fussed about taking away business because traffic only going one way. That was a big issue.
I'm sure there was. And this would just make it a little bit easier for visitors, but also for those of us that live here to circulate around blocks without having to make six lefts to go right.
So if this plan is... If we approve this or pass it on as approved, when it comes where the... You know, where it hits the fan, or is it coming back to this mission to...
Really, there will be some things that will. As Steve said, there are some regulatory issues recommended in the plan. That will be some heavy lifting. The capital improvement stuff will fall heavily on the city commission, some of the... And as well as some of the policy stuff that it recommends. But like all plans, there'll be... A number of players will influence that. Budget, availability of grants, et cetera.
I feel that the... And I'm asking you this. I feel that this plan is not only specific in its area, but it's specific in what it wants and where it wants it to be built. And I don't know that the comprehensive plan, to me, suggests that we can not only tell them what we want there...
But where we want it.
But where we want it to be built.
Exactly.
And I don't understand that, Steve.
For example...
Why is it being so specific as to these particular things? And I'll just take, for example, the Roundabout. With buildings on one or two sides. I know that's a concept, but it looks like it's pushing us in that direction that we're recommending that these things happen at these places.
There are a number of things that are highly specific as to location, like the Roundabout, like the...
Town Square, definitely.
Like the town... Well, that's where the vacant lot is, where the vacant properties are. The binding. One of the, I guess, one of the things when they came in, we first started talking about them, we could have said, you know, cost is not an option. Let's take every east-west street and build streetscape all the way through Lower Town. Let's build more pathways from downtown into that neighborhood. Well, we knew cost was an issue. So, you know, let's give it our... It's cost prohibitive to do it everywhere, just like we only do it on Broadway, we don't do it on Kentucky, we don't do it on Jefferson, we do it a little bit on Second Street. So let's take our... Where's our best bet? Where's our best place to put it? So we have a recommendation that we do Broadway. And as for Cross Street, Sixth Street, what drove that recommendation was, well, that's where it certainly is. That's where most foot traffic tends to go. My druthers were it should go to Seventh Street because that's the end of Broadway where the streetscape is and it goes to the Texaco. But right now, there's a lot less foot traffic that picks that corridor. What it tends to pick is Sixth Street. So... And then obviously linkages will have to be built that incorporates and ties in the art school. And then it talks about some sub-linkages that ties in this area to downtown and some other sub-linkages where we don't go to quite all the heroics as we do on those streets. And then the Higginbotham is nonspecific. It just says, get it downtown.
I understand. Just like the train, best place for it, put it downtown. And then it almost rusted apart, you know, before we got around to maintaining it. Somebody did. And this thing is going to be a colossal maintenance thing.
Oh, yeah.
I can understand it.
Oh, yeah, but I think it's going to be a huge, huge attraction if done properly. I have every confidence that it would be done properly.
You know, actually, when the original design for the River Heritage Museum, it was to be built to look like Toubout.
Yeah, you'll remember, E.H. Johnson was it? And it was on that site, the Smith Property Site. And it came full circle, you know, on the ramp, said it should still be on that side, at that end, yes. Yes, but that involves private property and sometimes you can make that happen, sometimes you can't.
Unless somebody can think of something else, Steve, I guess that's about all we can ask you and I appreciate you explaining various aspects of this to us. You said a major thing is Roundabout?
The... That one, there is a plan in the transportation element that calls for a Roundabout on Third and Fourth Street, near the hotel location, right where the two sharp curves come together. It'll be a colossal undertaking, if it can be done. It'll prove... It'll require state approval, state funding in order for that to happen if it does. Kentucky has built a number of them already. Possible, but transportation funds go through a community ranking process according to need and so maybe it'll eventually make its way onto a 20-year list. Maybe it'll eventually get funded. That one kind of becomes the one that gets outside of our hands, entirely relies on the state to say, yeah, we could make that happen. And there'd be a whole... There'd be a transportation study thicker than the ramp to say whether or not that could work or not right there.
But it has worked.
It has worked.
Can we talk a bit about our meeting two weeks from now when this comes up again?
Certainly. I have received several phone calls and because it was a date...
Steve, I appreciate it.
Because it was a date certain at the last meeting that the public hearing be tabled until, I think it's the June 4th meeting, that at that time testimony or more public comment would be received. And obviously, the person... The reason for that is, is there may be people for the plan, certain sections, and in certain sections, people may be against it. So it's their time to have open discussion of whether or not they approve or disapprove of the plan. So I would expect some people to be showing up the next meeting to discuss the plan.
Well, this is what law we call getting a second bite of the apple.
Sure.
We limited it to everyone to get up and speak. I mean, I think everybody had an opportunity to speak. Everyone's here to speak. Maybe some of them want to speak twice, but we're used to that. So...
So new evidence, obviously.
Continue the hearing, though.
That's right. And new evidence could be heard. What I did tell people that I talked to is that we really could not introduce new evidence of this because we had tabled the public hearing until June 4th. So at that time, people can speak openly again.
Notice that the TV camera is still on.
Yes, sir.
And if anybody is watching, I doubt it, but if they are, then they're welcome to come to our meeting during the 4th.
Absolutely.
I'm glad that you've been encouraging anybody who calls to come to the... Letting them know that there is a continued public hearing.
And I'm sure we've all had some phone calls too. I mean, I have and I've encouraged them also to come.
Okay. Anybody want to have some comment on it or input? Thank you all.